This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall at 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained constantly posted as required by law. The five exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Please speak into the microphone if you come up to speak. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comments, or if this statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive, and not on topic that is relevant to the borough governing body. Pledge of Allegiance. Josh, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Constitution, which stands: Coeur d'Etat, d'État d'Or, indivisible, et liberé, et justes.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Holger.
Here.
At this time, I'll call for Borough Council vacancy nomination.
I'll nominate Josh Pastolnik, Jason Pastolnik.
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
I nominate Norm Marcus.
Second. Okay. And now I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Just ask two.
The first one, the first one, sorry.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
No.
So the yes would carry?
The motion passes.
Uh, motion passes. Then we did our roll call. So now I'm going to invite Jason to come up for, to be sworn into office. New council person.
Can I step away from the kids?
Go get the kids.
Do you need a Bible?
Seriously, get them.
Our clerk will be right back. She has something that she has to get. Do you swear or affirm?
Do you want a Bible?
I don't know. Do you swear or affirm? You can do it with a, with a.
There's a marvin right there. Do I still have a blur vehicle traffic?
Oh, you can hold it on.
My case.
That works. It's working. Here you go. I'll be right down. I'm just, I'm getting the oath of office.
Sure. Absolutely.
Hi, Jason.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Justly perform the duties of the office of the Borough of Highland Park Council Member.
Justly perform the duties of the office of Highland Park Borough Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth in faith allegiance to the same.
That I will bear truth and allegiance to the same.
And to the governing bodies established in the United States.
And to the governing bodies established in the United States.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And now you get to join us.
That's it.
That's it.
Sit here, get to work.
Oh, we got to get a packet and an agenda and everything. Okay. Is there any question on the agenda by any of the council members? Seeing that there's none, at this time, we're going to have a Black History Month presentation by Reverend Wanda Burrell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Okay. Black history is not just 28 days in the month of February. However, black history is 365 days of the year, 12 months, 24/7, 7 days a week. Black history is a lifetime. I don't get excited about when black history comes in the month of February because every day when I look in the mirror, I see a black woman, and I'm a part of the American history. It has been recorded that Africans came to America in August 1619. There were 20 that came to Jamestown, Virginia, who were not slaves. They came by the way of the Viva Cape Comfort as indentured servants. We were here long before Christopher Columbus got here. We had settled centuries before him. Black Americans have contributed many things to America. We always hear about George Washington carving for peanut butter. We hear about Marian Anderson. We hear about Sir Jonah Chute, Harriet Tubman. All of them paved the ways, and we all stand on those shoulders. But however, there were many. Elmer Lucille Allen was the first African-American chemist employed by Brown Foreman. Just recently, 2023, Justina Miles, who was the first deaf black woman to perform as a sign language interpreter during the 2023 Super Bowl for Rihanna. You had James McCune Smith, the first black American to earn a medical degree. He also was the first one that started the nation's first pharmacy before CVS and Walgreens and Rite Aid and the rest. You had Lilia Finwick, who was the first African-American woman to graduate from Harvard's Law School in 1956. You had Heron Rose Rivals, who was sworn in as the first black U.S. Senator in 1870. Gillian Bleuford became the first black person to space in 1983 after the black leaders laid, after the black leaders, after the black ladies laid the foundation and, as we know, the hidden figures. Hip-hop first godmother Sylvia Robertson produced "Rapper's Delight" by Sugar Hill Gang. She co-owned the first hip-hop label, Sugar Hill Records. We all know that, know that gang, know that school rap song. Sidney 48 became the first black man to win an Oscar. 1996, Cheryl Swoops became the first female player to sign for the WNBA. And in 1908, you had the first black female sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, who was founded in 1908 at Howard University. 1906, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the first male black re organization. In 1854, which I'm so proud of, the Lincoln University was the first degree-granting of all the HBCUs during the 1800s. As I close, black history has been the foundation, black people have been the foundation of the growth of America and its economy. And slave people built the country's early infrastructure and produced lucrative commodities, such as things that we still use today, cotton and tobacco. We created the gas masks, blood banks, where we know peanut butter and potato chips, the GPS system that we use in our phones now because we don't use the old GPS machines anymore, the ironing board. How many people still use the iron? How many people still use the ironing board? Home security. How many people got home security? All right, reinventing home security. The refrigerator trucks. You know the refrigerator trucks that bring your milk and the eggs that cost so much? Protos? We produce that. Automatic elevator doors. You know those elevator doors, even though they do get stuck, but they still need maintenance. And that was created in 1887 by Alexander Mills. The tissue holders. You know that little tissue holder to hold up the toilet paper that we use? Tissue holders. And most of all, a popular toy that our children use, they've been using for years and years during the summertime, the super soaker. And the laser fat hole, that one that removes the cataracts from the eyes for those that may have cataracts, remove from the eye. Your clothes dry. The automatic gear shifter for those people that still have those cars, 2008, when I had the Teslas or the modern cars. Golf tees. How many people are golfers in here? How many play golf? Just mad else? Folding chairs. We got any folding chairs in here? Folding chairs. That's just to say a few things. And in 2023, we are still building. But most of all, what I want to leave with you about Black History Month, all of us are all the same. We may have, the only thing different that we have is our DNA and the color of our skin. But we all are part of this great community. One face, one nation, and one job to do, and that is to love one another.
Thank you. Well said, Reverend Burrell. Thank you. And now we're going to have a presentation on our revow update by Tom Mancuso, our Borough tax assessor.
Not sure how I can follow that. Anyway, property taxes, we all know and love, so we'll do our best. The revaluation is more or less complete. They've done their inspections. They've done everything they could do. And this Friday, we actually have to turn it over to the county tax board. It's the date they've given us to turn the information over to them. So that's what we're going to do. They've had the informal hearings. They've gone well. Some people, you know, our residents, as usual, are very prepared and very knowledgeable about their real estate and brought up some very good points. And there's some changes being made based on what they brought to the table. So the process, a portion of the process is over. Now the other portion begins because now the data becomes mine. I get to look at it and review and see what they've done. If residents have a question, I recommend they email me because part-time, it's hard to get ahold of me if you call. I recommend you email me because I do spend a lot of time, a lot more time than my wife would like me looking at the emails. But I do, so it'll give me an opportunity to respond to you if there are any questions. You will have until, normally April 1st is the deadline for filing tax appeals with the county tax board. Because it's a revow year for us, we will get until May 1st. Okay? So we do have a lot of time yet to look at this stuff. So if you have questions, call me. I can't make any changes at this point because we'll have to be done through the appeal process. But obviously, the appeal process would be a lot easier if I agree that there's something we need to make a change on. And if not, the county tax board, that's their job. They oversee this entire process. They will look at the data we put forth and that the property owner would put forth, and they'll come up with a number if they agree with one or the other, or come up with something in between. And after that process, once they visually do their judgments, the homeowners still will have, I think it's 40 days after the judgment is issued, to file a further appeal with the tax board. So it's, as much as we'd like to say it's over, it's really not over. You know, we give, we want to give property owners every opportunity to review and, you know, ask questions and go further if they're not happy, if they're not happy or not satisfied with what's happened. But so far, the review I've gotten is, you know, pretty positive. I haven't gotten a lot of bad feedback. A lot of it might be around inspections. Some people don't want us in the home, and I understand that. But unfortunately, we didn't set up this property tax system where it's done on the value of the home, and you know that inspection is important when it comes to the value of the home. You're not required to let, not required to let us through. But if you don't, it kind of hinders your ability to challenge your value when we can't discuss what's inside the house and what the condition is. And generally, what I find is, when we get into the house, the issue of the appeal goes away because then we get the exact data on what's inside the house and we reach some type of agreement with the property owner. But all in all, it's going very well. I want to thank you as a governing body for helping us publicize this and get this out because it's, we have, you know, pretty good response from our residents. And considering this short timeframe we had to get this all done, it's pretty decent. It came out nice. I'm happy with it. We'll spend the next year or so just fine-tuning and making it nice and tight. But I think the numbers are going to be good. From what I've seen so far on askings or recent sales, we're either a little low, a little high, or right in the middle. So it's exactly what we were expecting. So I want to thank you all because it was, obviously, a revaluation is scary, especially since we have not done one since 1990. But I think, you know, all in all, it's going to make my life easier, and hopefully, the feedback you folks will get will be more positive too. Thank you.
Tom, could you please repeat your phone number again for those who need it?
Oh, come on. You don't think I have that memorized?
An email, an email.
All right, an email is easy. It's T-M-A-N-B-R-B at hpborough.com.
Okay.
Okay? If you want the number, I can look it up if I have it on my card here. But I don't have it memorized. But for that matter, I don't have.
Stephanie might have that number, no?
There we go. I got it. I got it. 732-819-3783. But again, the email would be better because I get those at all hours. And, you know, whenever I get a minute in one of my other towns, I will sit and respond. You know? All right?
Thank you. Just a quick recap. You said we're finished here, but the process is that in 40 days, somebody, they could still reach out to you, they can reach out to the county, and there's a 40-day process?
No. What happens is they, there is now until May 1st. They can call me up until May 1st. The appeal has to be filed with Middlesex County Tax Board by May 1st.
Okay.
Okay? So they have until then. Then the county will issue a judgment, usually sometime before June. And typically, I believe, if I remember correctly, it's 40 days that the resident would have after that judgment, if they disagree with it, to go further to the tax board. That rarely happens on a residential basis, but, you know, I just want, you know, residents to know that that is an opportunity.
Thank you.
I just, just a follow-up question, as much for the audience as myself. If, after you speak with someone before that May 1st deadline, are you able to, and you agree that the number may need adjusting one way or the other, do you have the ability to make that?
No, they would still have to file the tax appeal. But it's, there's no.
But it will be a smoother process if there's a concurrent.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear because I know I wasn't.
There's no adversary, there's no, you know, thing, one is right, one is, no, it's just, yes, we agree, and the county will just more or less.
And so it more likely to be a rubber stamp at that point.
Yes. They approve it without much of a question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me. Bye now.
And now we're going to go on to council reports. Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
So I know Assessor Mancuso left. I'd like to thank him for coming tonight. He took most of my report and what I've been repeating here for most of the time. I did want him to come, and you guys can hear it from him directly, the update on the revow. CDBG will be meeting Monday, February 27th, at 6:00 p.m. to have our hearings for our grants for this year. And also, would like to welcome the new council member, welcome aboard, get ready for all of the tomato throwing from her residents.
Thank you.
Also, also, again, I just want to, if you can't get in touch with Tom, we do also have our, the company that we hired to perform this revow, which we pay them a lot of money. The first step, I would say, is actually reach out to them, professional property appraisers. And their number, once again, is 1-800-410-5815. Our, also, another program, the deadline has been extended, I think, about two, three times at this point now, but all for good reasons. The Anchor Rebate Deadline is February 28th, 2023. You can apply and get more information at nj.gov/treasury/taxation/anchor. Last night, I attended the first round of the state's championship for the HP Varsity Boys Basketball Game. Phenomenal job on making it this far. I am rooting for you. So keep going. Lastly, for, for those of you who's celebrating, it is Pisces season, so happy birthday to all the fellow Pisces in the room. And that is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Hi, my name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Stop and Shop Talk About Nothing Else But Stop and Shop Committee, otherwise known as Economic Development. I have a quick report tonight that that next Tuesday, February 28th, at 7:00 p.m., we're going to have a community meeting about Stop and Shop. At this meeting, we're going to talk about the variety of different things that the borough has been, been doing. We're going to talk some, some big-picture items about a coming redevelopment plan. It's really an opportunity for us to sort of share all of the things that we've been working on about Stop and Shop, but, but also to have a series of sort of breakout spaces where we can look at different aspects of the project, different things that we're going to need when Stop and Shop closes, and how we're addressing those. So this is going to be February 28th at 7 o'clock at the Community Center. I think it is a great opportunity to, not only for us to, to explain all of the various things that we've been doing, but also to listen to the community about the things that you're, you're concerned about, the things that you're worried about, the things that you would like to see. And so this, this is a community-wide event. We'll be posting it, we'll be sharing it widely. Please come if you can. Please come and, and bring us your ideas and your thoughts, and we'll do our best to have a conversation about, about what we're doing with Stop and, the property and, and moving forward. So again, February 28th, 7 o'clock at the Community Center. That's next Tuesday. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Canavera.
Thank you. The Board of Health would like to remind everybody that while the COVID, the flu, and the RSV levels are low at the current moment, it's still important that you protect yourself or anybody that may need protection. If you feel sick, please wear a mask, get tested. If you haven't been vaccinated, get vaccinated. The Mental Health Commission is also having an event, February 28th at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. It is NAMI's End the Silence Program. It's geared for middle school and high school students and their family. It talks about the warning signs of mental illness, what to look for in taking the stigma away from mental illness. They would also like to remind you that if you are in crisis, the local hotlines are Rutgers University Behavioral Health Hotline at 855-515-5700, the Raridan Bay Hotline at 732-442-3794, or you can also text H-O-M-E to 741-741. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief report. We welcome new Highland Park Police Department Officers Ryan Vanaman and Nicholas Seeca to our town this month. They're new to the town, but they have experience in other departments, and both are in field training right now. They're very well-informed in community policing based on the public safety interviews, and they're looking forward to becoming familiar with all of us and looking forward to all of us becoming familiar with them. And so I'm very hopeful, and I know the chief has them in, in training right now. Another coffee with a cop session is scheduled, it's actually, was scheduled for tonight before we knew that there would be extra sessions to the meeting. The chief has gone forward to reinstitute them, or came up with the idea, and then unfortunately, the pandemic squeezed them out for a while, went back to holding those events on a regular basis now, as the chief felt it was time that we start to emerge and conduct them. There's no agenda for these meetings, there's no plans, it's simply a time to engage with the officers, discuss what's on your mind, and hear what's on their mind. The Highland Park Police Department wants everyone to be aware, there's been a continuing rash of catalytic converter thefts going on, in particular, if you have an old Ford Ranger like mine, it's got plenty of room to roll underneath, so they tend to want to hit SUVs and pickup trucks because they're easy to get underneath. Catalytic converters are stolen, and people can make money on them by selling them surreptitiously. Also, cars that are open are being picked through. It doesn't look like much is taken or much damage is done, but please, please, keep your cars locked at all times. And if you have a key fob, keep it with you when you leave the car because it's so easy to gain access otherwise. In addition, the department asks you that you hold your key fobs in a secure place inside. The further placed, the better. I keep them in the closet, in the closet in the kitchen with the metal canisters around it because there are now search, search devices on your cell phone where they can actually key your key fobs, start your car, and drive away. So please, everybody, keep, keep an eye on your cars, keep an eye on your keys. There's also an uptick in porch pilots lately, so they're stealing packages. If you're the victim of one of these thieves and you happen to have surveillance footage, even if you weren't able to save the package, please contact the police department. Every lead that we get, every surveillance that we get, every video that we get can help us locate and hopefully stop these issues. And lastly, the Board of Trustees of the library met last night and discussed the process for selecting the new executive director. Sherri Johnson, our acting director, is continuing the excellent programming at the library, so there's been no interruption with that. However, the trustees have selected a consultant to aid them in selecting a full-time director, and there are already a few candidates waiting to be referred to the board for consideration. And the personnel committee at the library met after the regular meeting last night to review the process, plan for the interview process, and get moving on that as soon as possible. Other than that, I wish everybody a happy fat Tuesday. If you're celebrating, hopefully, see you later at the celebration. And otherwise, be safe, be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, our newest council member get a reprieve tonight because you just got sworn in, so you get a pass. Or do you have something you want to share?
I mean, I would just like to say briefly, just thank you to all the members, fellow members of the Democratic Committee of Highland Park for passing me along to the, through the first round, and then thanks to all of you for giving me this really humbling opportunity to be a member of this council. I really look forward to working with all of you. Thanks to all the people out there who spoke with you and put in some pine words. I really appreciate that. And last, but certainly not least, most importantly, my family, my two little girls, my wife. Their support means the world to me, so again, just really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. And I do want to just echo, welcome to Councilmember Pastolnik. We're really happy to have you here with us, and because, as Councilmember Kim Cho Han mentioned, we have a lot in front of us. I don't think people throw tomatoes. But it is important, though, to make lemons out of lemonade. And so if we're going to use produce references, I think that's a good way to, to approach our, you know, some, some of the challenging things that we're doing. Very quickly, since we have, it feels like we've been here for a while. The, last week, so I'm Matthew Hirsch, I, up until tonight, I chaired the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. Now I'm happy to assume fully the Public Works Committee as chair, as Councilmember Pastolnik adopts Arts and Rec, which is a great portfolio.
members of the Democratic Committee of Highland Park for passing me along to the, through the first round and then thanks to all of you for giving me this really humbling opportunity to be a member of this council. I really look forward to working with all of you. Thanks to all the people out there who spoke with you and put in some pine words, we really appreciate that. And last, but certainly not least, most importantly, my family, my two little girls, my wife, their support means the world to me. So again, just really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor Foster. I, and I do want to just echo, welcome to Councilmember Pasternik. We're really happy to have you here with us and because as Councilmember Kim Cho had mentioned, we have a lot in front of us. I don't think people throw tomatoes, but it is important though to make lemons out of lemonade. And so if we're going to use produce references, I think that's a good way to, to approach our, you know, some, some of the challenging things that we're doing. Very quickly, since we have, feels like we've been here for a while, the, last week, so I'm Matthew Hirsch, I, up until tonight, I chaired the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee and now I'm happy to assume fully the Public Works Committee as chair as Councilmember Pasternik adopts Arts and Rec, which is a great portfolio where a lot of the quality of life happens. So if you'll, let me indulge, I just want to report out on two things in your portfolio.
Please do.
Last week, Windows of Understanding hosted the Liberation Social Event, celebrating BIPOC and LGBTQIA+ communities at the Zimmerley Museum. The galleries, the museum were, were open and guided, and there were guided tours available. The crowd was fascinated by the immersive exhibit of contemporary art by Komar and Malamed. They came to the US from the USSR in 1977 with a powerful and sometimes humorous perspective on society. The sponsoring organizations were represented at the party with volunteers answering questions about activities and resources available. And of course, music and food helped make the party festive and fantastic. So thank you for that. It was a dark and stormy night. Just to add 243 words and a great story, to enter the Highland Park Arts Commission's Writing Contest. When the clock strikes 11:59 PM on Saturday, March 4th, you'll get an assignment emailed to you. You'll get a genre, an action, or even just a word. And you'll have 24 hours to return a story of 250 words or less. This is open to all ages. To sign up or request details, email HPACWritingContest@gmail.com before Saturday, March 4th. Please include your name, email, age and address. It's 250 words. I missed out on the first, on the first one. I think we should all challenge ourselves to do this one because it's a very cool assignment and the Arts Commission really is operating on all cylinders, a very vibrant creative group that we have. Park Stock is, is gearing up for season two. It's four days of, four days and four rain dates of peace, love and music in July and August. We don't have the final date set, but there is planning going on. We have Sheila Shuklin, Gary Kaplan and Terry Hofer and all the planning folks, Kim, Kim McGraw, who have helped kind of facilitate this. Mayor Foster, thank you for your, for, for helping to facilitate this too. It was an incredibly successful program last year and we really look forward to having another really four amazing performances. And it just brings life to the pavilion in the park and an area that we really want to showcase for public performing arts. And, you know, hopefully in the long term, we get additional investment down there. I am also happy to report that the Municipal Alliance will once again provide funds for Project Graduation for the Highland Park High School class of 2023. Last year, the Municipal Alliance helped support Project Graduation and this year, the class of 2023, we're proud that the borough will once again contribute to this annual event that gives our graduating seniors an opportunity to celebrate without alcohol or drugs or driving and with lots of fun activities. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Administrator Report?
Yes, Mayor, thanks. I just have a quick reminder, if you missed it, the deadline for application to our Park Partners Grant Program is, I want to double check my notes, March 6th. The instructions for how to apply are on our website and you can just put in the term Park Partners in the search box in the top right corner and it'll take you to the page and the application. You can also email our Public Information Officer, Harry Glazer, at HGlazer@HPBoro.com if you have any questions about that. I will say it's, it's a really kind of innovative program that's won awards in the state where basically residents can suggest projects that get implemented in the borough, $2,000 each. And it's a really great opportunity to get a little seed project going and it can snowball into something bigger. So I just encourage everybody to take the opportunity to apply for that grant. And the only other just reminder I had was for those who live on the north side, garbage pickup is tomorrow due to the holiday, just a friendly reminder to get your toders out early before, before they come on by. Thanks.
Thank you. Our Attorney's Report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And now I have a, a very brief report. The long awaited, many of you have written, many emails have come to this meeting and have requested that we go hybrid. We're actually working on it, so stay tuned. Coming next month, we should be moving in that direction. So just give us a little bit of time to get this going. With that said, we celebrated the, the senior center. We had Valentine's Day for our seniors and it was an awesome event. For the first time since COVID, they had over 120 people attended the event. It was well attended, they had a great time and it was very festive. So for all the staff that made it happen and for all the, who came out and participated, thank you so much for coming out to the luncheon. We look forward to doing more events such as this with our senior group and making sure that we are creating a harmonious community and harmonious environment. Teen Advice Recouncil met last week and they are very spirited and they're working on some really good initiatives for Highland Park. And this is the Mayor Teen Advice Recouncil. They are working on a project and they're going to be calling a number of you, council members alike, to help them aid to the project that they're working on. It's, it's well worth it and I'm quite sure each and every one of you will be happy to Boards and Commissions, we have a number of vacancies on our boards and commission and we're asking people to please come out, support our many boards and commission that we have because together we can make Highland Park a much vibrant community when we all volunteer to chip in and do so. I spoke last week at St. Peter's Hospital for their Black History Month and that was, it was an awesome event. The Black Alliance at, at St. Peter's invited me to talk about some of where we, where we were, where we are, where we're going. And it was a very spirited event and I was happy to represent not only as a black person, but to also represent our town of Highland Park. Our replacement supermarket, I know it's, it's, every time I talk to someone, it doesn't matter who I speak to, I always say we're, we need a supermarket. So if I meet you and you haven't heard me say I need a supermarket, ask your friends, ask your colleagues, you never know who knows whom. We're looking for a supermarket. It's our, it's, it's a number one priorities on all our minds and I'm going to be in Trenton again. I was down there before and I'm going back this month to talk about our need for a supermarket and some collaborative corroborations that we can put together to make sure that Highland Park does not become a food desert. Last, two weeks ago, I attended a program called Arrive Together. And that was an initiative that was done to help persons with mental illnesses. It's for persons who are going through behavior health crisis. Governor Murphy and Attorney Plankin announced this major expansion of mental health crisis response and it's called Arrive Safely. And in May, the program will roll out in Highland Park, Edison and Woodbridge. And we will, where, if there's a motion disturbed call that comes in, along with an officer going responding to the call, there will be a social worker going with them to aid that person who's in need of help. It's long overdue. We've all heard stories where persons who are mentally disturbed, it hasn't worked out so well for them. So I am so happy that the governor has put in $10 million into this project to make sure across the state that this can expand out to eight people who have mental, who have, or suffering from mental illness. That's my report. Thank you. And now I'm going to move into public discussion. It's time to allot 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker to comments limited to what's on the agenda. If you want to speak on the item that is not listed on the agenda, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning of 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at three, at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if this statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of public meeting, is repetitive or not on the topic of relevance to the borough governing body. Please announce your name and address as you speak into the microphone.
My name is Jill Medinnits. I'm at 242 South Sixth Avenue, apartment 5F in Highland Park. I'm a little confused about the gentleman that was here, about the tax assessments on the properties and the councilwoman at the end. What is there, what her job is, what was his job? I'm a little confused about that.
Councilmember Cho Han, please speak to that.
So the, the gentleman that was here, that is our Borough Tax Assessor, which falls under my portfolio. I chair finance. The borough has went through a townwide reevaluation. The last time we've had a townwide reevaluation was 30-plus years ago. So we hired a company, we were actually, the most important part, we were ordered from the county to do this, have this process. And so appraisers went into all the properties, commercial and residential in our town. And now we received the results and we're moving forward. If anyone has any questions, they can reach out to our tax assessor or you will have received a letter. If you're, are, are you a renter or?
I'm a renter.
Okay, so.
I own homes.
Yes. Well, no, the renters, if you're in a large, I guess if it's a development or so, they will have received the letter that he was referring to. Can I just add something in there too? Because I just thought, and for anyone that's on home, for the renters, I, I just don't want you to get kind of confused or get scared in any things that I'm saying, your landlord received this letter. We are working on our rent control policy where there won't be any kind of funny business or any increases to, to have things in place where increases will not be passed along to the residents that are absurd.
No, I just have friends that own homes. I'm trying to say, let these people in, make appointments, so they get an accurate assessment.
Yes, I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jackie Zinberg, 239 South Sixth Avenue in Highland Park. On South Fourth Avenue, I believe it is, between Bright Aid and Stop and Shop, there's a very nice newly repaired street avenue, blacktop, beautiful, firm, flat, smooth. Last year, it wasn't like that. My cane, the rubber tip caught on a very big disparity and I fell. I was trying to get to, out of the street and instead I smashed into the curb. All of these bones were fractured. I've had three surgeries so far. I don't know if I'm going to need more or not. I'm not fine. I don't sleep well, see well, I'm sorry, and I do have pain. I don't want to be the precursor of the next one that needs to be repaired. And I am also saying to everyone that sometimes silence speaks a lot more loudly than words. Anybody who thinks we should give money, and we are limited, we're a borough. Anybody who thinks that we should spend money on the pretty twinkly lights down Raritan Avenue instead of fixing even one patch, raise your hand now and say you think the lights are more important. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. However, Councilmember George, you were just on DPW. You can really speak to, you can really speak to our street programs or?
We have, we have tried for years and years and years to do more than we can. Paving is not cheap, number one. We did have a great opportunity though, over the last basically 18 months to two years because we combined and, and our Borough Administrator, Terry Hofer, really was active along with DPW Superintendent, PSENG. We were in, almost daily discussing it, but because, and you've heard me say over and over again, I was the one in charge of the stuff and the dirt. Underneath the paving, we had to start working on the systems. PSENG had to upgrade their piping for the gas, which is almost as old as the water and sewer, at 110 years old. As a result, the law requires them to repave the streets. But what we did was we combined our paving program, their repaving requirements, and we got a little money from here and there and we shifted around a little bit of money from here and there, ignoring the twinkly lights, a lot of the trees, a lot of the plants, you know, that we want to put in. We scaled them back and then we went into this program and as a result, I think you can see, we did a lot of streets. In some areas, in some districts, we did 80% of the streets and not just a block. As you know, we do the paving programs, we, and literally, we're 10 years out in our paving program because streets have so many years of useful life. And what we try and do is there's some programs where we can, we can tar the cracks and we usually get about an extra five years out of them. Part of the problem is we have to have the DPW guys around to do it, but they're picking up your garbage. So we went to one arm machines, so we pick up two guys per team. All these things balanced out, but this year, if you noticed, we did get a lot of streets paved and, and hopefully we able to do a little bit more. But what we did was we saw that all of the utilities were starting to come together at one time and as a result, we got a lot more paving done this year. Unfortunately, could we do everything? No. Are we going to be able to repave everything every year? No. But also this year, we've had, we've had, you could either call it a long autumn or an early spring, but we've had really good weather by and large. So Mike Wazurkowitz, our superintendent, has put the paving crews back on, on Wednesdays mostly when work crews are available to do a lot more pothole interception and crack repairs so that, we're trying to hold on, as best I can tell you.
Sometimes it's as simple as when the new sidewalk was put in by the senior center by the side, they didn't backhoe the dirt. And so the disparity was this big, this was new, I thought you'd go click, not click. And so I was the one who fell over the edge sidewalk. Do you want to know where you need to repair? Tell me to come for a walk, I'll show you. But, you know, these things, and they just, just tell somebody, walk around, look, that's all. And some of them can be, so they'll go past.
I, I think pretty much everybody knows it's either my old Ford Ranger pickup truck or my MG or on my bicycle. I tried to hit all the streets when I was, and Matt will do that now, I'm sure, try and hit all the streets at least once a week just to make sure what's going on.
Everybody, thank you, George.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Forsberg, 317 Denison Street, Highland Park, obviously. I, I have issues about the, I have a number of questions as always, but I have some pretty, I think, major issues about the revow that has taken place in Highland Park. I was here two weeks, two weeks ago and I had just received my letter. They estimated the value of my house at $553,000. The house right next door to me sold in September for $400,000. I talked to PPA. That house was not part of the, of the five comparables they gave me. They gave me five comparables that had absolutely nothing to do with my house. They were all in, in the northern, I live on Denison Street, as some of you know. They were all in strictly residential areas, not on a street like Denison Street, which is now zoned commercial, for commercial redevelopment for a four to five-story parking garage, no, three to five-story parking garage and, and apartment. They did not take into account the location and I don't know why they did not notice that the house right next door to me sold. Not all that much different than, than my house. So I talked to them about it. They did reduce the, the assessment on my house, but it's still inappropriate. So I have a lot of questions about this. I'd like to know what kind of instructions they were given by the borough, by the council in terms of what they should look at about location. Did you tell them that you have just revalued, you have just rezoned large parts of the downtown area and that houses across the street from most of those places are residential? They are not commercial, they are not professional office. Did you tell them that? Did they know that? I don't think they knew that. I, I also sent in a request for a complete list of all of the comparable sales that were used two weeks, almost two weeks ago. I've not gotten that. And I was very curious to see if the house that was next door to me, which And I was very curious to see if the house that was next door to me, which is totally, totally inappropriate comp for anyone that lives on Denison Street, um, not in the non-residential area.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I have not received that list, but I still want to get that list. And I also would like to see, I know that um, when you do revale, thirty percent of the, of the properties go up, in terms of taxes, thirty percent go down, thirty percent stay the same. I would like to see an analysis of this, because I suspect that what you're gonna do is hit up all the forty, the forty-four properties that you selected, that you handpicked for special review by a separate company. That's gonna go way up. All of those properties are people who have lawyers on staff, who likely will challenge successfully their assessments, and whatever people think their property taxes are going down, it's not gonna, not gonna hold in 2023.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary Botion, 709 Madison. Number one, for the record, I'm one of the residents who continues to object to your intentions to make Highland Park a pot city destination, and who also objects to resolutions for letters of support for any of these businesses. For those who feel the same way, you can reach me at M-B-O-T-T-E-O-N at Verizon.net. Number two, regarding the five pot shop applications which you want to issue letters of support for, did any of these five indicate yes for a marijuana consumption lounge? If so, which ones? Please let me know when I'm finished. Number three, once again, false information is being given to the Highland Park public regarding the pot ordinances that you approved. Specifically, the language in each of these resolutions is false with regard to this sentence, ordinance number 212027, to permit up to five Class V retail cannabis businesses. That was not in ordinance 212027. This significant land use change, specifically designating up to five Class V, was made in ordinance 222044. I have copies showing these ordinances where this language is false in tonight's resolutions for these five applicants. Number four, in addition, either the cannabis application memo on the borough website is wrong, or the resolution language is wrong, is there are conflicting dates as to when you opened your RFP process? Again, when I'm done, please indicate which of these documents is wrong. Regarding the application and resolution for 176 Woodbridge Ave. to host a pot shop, Stephen Mittler appears to be the son of Highland Park's seven weeks ago mayor, Gail Mittler. Stephen would be the pot shop landlord of that location, and therefore would directly benefit from the fact that his mother just spent a large portion of her administration orchestrating and facilitating pot shops to come into Highland Park. There is concern that if you issue support for this pot shop location, it might possibly be a case of corruption, the more it gets looked into, but certainly at this point, it appears unethical and a huge conflict of interest. Please do not issue a letter to 176 Woodbridge Ave. for a pot shop. If you could now please answer the questions that I detailed in my statement.
Our attorney?
Thirty seconds.
Madam Mayor, as you know, we're in litigation with Mrs. Botion, so my advice would be not to respond to any of those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. I wonder, I did come a little bit late, I wonder if the new councilman has a name, because all I hear is new councilman.
I do, it's Jason Postelnick.
Thank you.
P-O-S-T-E-L, and I can't, you're writing that down.
I'll find it, thank you, I'm welcome. Catalytic converter expert, isn't there a collar that is put on, can be put on to prevent the cutting of the catalytic converter from the rest of the muffler system before or after? Isn't there something special they're doing?
Not that I know of.
Let's invent it. I wonder, agenda number fifteen Q, could someone please name the actual, physical, real addresses? Seven addresses adding to the parcel for track C, I think it is.
Um, Terry?
You stumped the crowd.
No, we, we, we have to look.
The truth is, I don't have the addresses handy, but I can provide them, can I describe the locations?
Yes, right, I don't have them either. Describe where they are, it'd be great.
So essentially, this is around track C of, and we discussed this at the redevelopment meeting last week, I don't know if you were in attendance or had a chance, uh, but essentially, um, we're looking at extending the area in need, area to either corner, set on second, with track C is on the borough parking lot site, um, so basically to the corner of third and the corner of South Second. So I believe it's, I just don't have the address information on the tip of my tongue.
So there was confusion about South Second and Raritan, so it's not the Sunoco that's part of this?
No, the adjacent to the market lot, so, yeah, the corner lot adjacent, on the same block as track C.
Second to third. And so with all these developments having been placed in Highland Park, constructed, what have we done to the sewer and water system that's a hundred and ten years old? And I still have a leak down the end of Denison Street. Harry Glazer had, we, I saw the trucks out there, the water company trucks many times, they jackhammered, I'm told. One leak is gone, the first, original leak is back. It disappears, and then it's back. Okay, so anyhow, what else have you done replacing the sewer system? We got sewage in the basement of my block, neighbors, eighteen inch, twelve inches, seven inches. What have you done? All we hear, the reason this rehab or redevelopment is, and is blaming a hundred and ten year old water and sewers. I don't see any replacements, I see a few, I, I have the list of the repairs. What else is gonna happen to prevent another catastrophe, especially adding another, whatever, fifty people alongside the, almost a thousand that are in in the last ten years with Pulte and Castle in Cleveland?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll, I'll finish that, but that's, that's my, it's gonna be my question to you guys every time I'm here. What have you done? So that this doesn't come up again. Thank you.
As you know, that, as you are aware, and you just told us that the systems are over a hundred years old, and we have been actively working on re, doing sewer relining and replacement, and as new development comes in, comes on track, that will be considered as well, because we do need relining and replacement.
We did that once, we did relining.
But you can't do it, it, we did that back in early two thousand, and, and we, the process will continue. It's not a, we didn't do the entire town and that was it, there's much more to get done, and we can't do the entire town in ten years and say, that's it, we're done.
So relining?
The process will continue.
Relining makes this, the pipes smaller, because you're relining it, but so we're not adding any humongous new sections to it.
Terry?
I just want to clarify one point. Uh, the project that Mayor Foster just mentioned was a relining of the water lines, I believe, a few sewers, different, there are different approaches depending on if we're doing a road project, and the road's open, you can replace the pipe more easily. If there's a new road, you can line it. So there's a lot of aspects, and our team at Middlesex Water, where we have a capital plan that we'll be presenting to the Public Works Committee for, uh, we had that law, that very extensive inspection done through town, where we had the TV and camera, cleaning and camera work for the entire system, and we have a to-do list, a pretty considerable one, of both repairs and upgrades to the sewer system, and we will be looking at our redevelopment locations in particular, as they relate to those projects.
Good. The manholes were changed, or many of them were made without holes, so that the water wouldn't infill, whatever it's called. And um, now I forgot something else I was gonna ask, thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow, Lois. Dominic Cerminaro, I live at 244 Harrison Avenue. My question concerns the five locations on tonight's agenda. My questions are just two. The first one is, what was the criteria used to select those five locations? That's the first question. Second question is, what investigation did the borough do, either by the police department or the planner, as to these locations, as the impact is going to be tremendous upon the borough? Those are my questions.
Our attorney?
Well, I could defer to the administrator, but the criteria used was set forth in the request for proposals. So there's an outline in that request, it goes on for a page and a half, about the different elements that the borough wanted to look at, and the review committee wanted to look at, in terms of making recommendations for the award of the local recommended licenses. And so that's been spelled out since, I believe Terry issued that in June of last year. And that's the criteria that was evaluated when the applications came in. And beyond that, there was a committee of three that answered to the administrator, who checked out the various applicants, and made a recommendation to the administrator, who's now made the recommendation to the council.
So the applicants who weren't selected, the same process took place, and there were reasons from their application that they didn't qualify for the site, is that correct?
Well, there, there were ten applications for the five slots, and each of them were evaluated under the same criteria. So, each, each one of them in terms of site control, et cetera, et cetera. And they were awarded points as they did that, and they added up the points at the end, and the five top were the ones that were recommended.
So the five who weren't selected didn't add up to the total points that the ones who were selected?
Correct, the, the, the top five, and again, I could defer to the administrator who's making the recommendation, but the top five were the highest number of points on the evaluation.
Are those evaluations available to the public?
Well, the, the, if somebody submits an Oprah request, sure.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Viva Kaufman, 123 South Adelaide.
Just one second, Terry, you want to add something?
No, I just want to go ahead, we hit the twenty minute, one minute mark, so it's up to you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll let you finish, although we hit the twenty minute mark, I'll let you, because you stood up already. Viva?
My name is Viva Kaufman, I live at 123 South Adelaide, Highland Park, apartment four G. I've lived here all my life. I'm totally against any pot shops in Highland Park. I have personal experience, I also run a family doctor's office, of what it does to the community, to our children who live very close to these shops that you've designated, and I'm totally against it. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Okay. Ordinance requires first reading?
In ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the borough of Highland Park, chapter three eighty Taxi Cab Fairs, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
No rejections?
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain. Postelnick? Post. Like P or H? If that's spelled that way.
Okay. Okay. All right, now we move on to the consent agenda. Resolution, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject consent agenda A fifteen A through fifteen T?
So moved.
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and I want to point out that these professional consultants, uh, you know, all work, are contracted and work with the borough and are vetted, uh, and many of, we have long relationships with, uh, and you know, the council is always coming up, is always assessing our, our relationships with our vendors, uh, and we are always reassessing and making sure that we're getting the best service possible, so, uh, yes to all, thank you.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, abstain fifteen L.
And Councilperson, person Postelnick?
Abstain, I'd like to vote to approve fifteen S.
Resolution requires separate reading, sixteen A two dash twenty-three dash seventy-five, resolution to amend two thousand twenty-three municipal treasury budget.
So moved.
So moved, second.
No, I'm sorry.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and please let the record show, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han set the first motion.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postelnick?
Yes.
Sixteen B twenty-two dash twenty-three dash seventy-six, resolution for local support of applicant for Class V retail license for BLKBRN comma LLC to operate retail cannabis at 176 Woodbridge Avenue, Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
No.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Abstain.
And Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain.
So we have three yes, one no, and two abstentions.
Adopted.
Okay, it's adopted, okay. Our attorney, adopted, okay. All right, resolution sixteen C two dash twenty-three dash seventy-seven, resolution on local support for applicants, Class V retail license for Anjack Life LLC to operate retail cannabis business at 225 Woodbridge Avenue in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain.
Sixteen D two dash twenty-three dash seventy-eight, resolution for local support of application for Class V retail license for Herbalist, Herbal City LLC to operate retail cannabis at 246 Raritan Avenue, Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain.
Sixteen E two dash twenty-three dash seventy-nine, resolution for local support of applicant for Class V retail license for Flow Highland Park LLC to operate retail cannabis at eighty-five Raritan Avenue in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Roca, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
And Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain.
Sixteen F two dash twenty-three dash eighty, resolution for local support of applicant for Class V retail license for Main Street Dispensary LLC to operate cannabis business at 311 Raritan Avenue, Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey. Roca? I'm sorry, motion?
So moved. Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Abstain.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postelnick?
Abstain.
Okay, now we move on to appointments. It has come to my attention that Abby Stern Cardinal has resigned from the Board of Health. However, uh, we're gonna, the following representative will be for the Board of Health, Chris Woodard, Laurel Cornfield, and Jesse Carson. Commission for Universal Access Diane Feldman, Scott Brescher, ADA Coordinator, Lieutenant John Satchel, Police Department Representative. Emergency Management Council John Satch- Emergency Management Council John Satchel, Deputy Coordinator. Motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilperson Postolnik?
Abstain.
Now it's time for our second public discussion session. Each person has three minutes and may comment on any topic. The Borough will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and indicate when the three minutes has elapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning when there is a 30-second remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure that everyone has had a chance to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if this statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, it's disruptive or not on topic that's relevant to the Borough governing body. Please announce your name and address for the record and speak into the microphone.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. I remembered what I forgot. How much will the Borough be selling Track C for? My second time I'm asking.
How much?
How much? What is the price?
Borough Administrator?
About.
Just one second.
That's under, we're in negotiations with the developer on the project, and we can't disclose that at this time.
If it's possible that it'll be zero or $1, I think you should be careful. I think that's what hap, I know that's what happened in the deeds in the 50s with the Highland Park development, when they gave apartment complexes at Montgomery Apartments and a lot of the buildings on 27 after World War II for development for the incoming veterans. And the changeover was from drastic Republican population to Democrats. Talk to Mr. Duca, except he's in heaven, and he'll tell you that's what happened. So, not for free. Thank you.
Councilmember Hale, do you have anything you wish to add?
No.
Thank you.
Mary Forsberg, again, 317 Denison Street. Actually have two questions that aren't related to my other issue of the REVäl. I, I'm curious, you said that there was a three-person committee that selected the five of the 10 pot chops, shots, chops. Who were the three members of the committee?
Our Attorney?
And I'll just ask my second question. Of the, of the 15 professional jobs that you've just approved people for, were there any other people who wanted to be, like, you know, a professional in Highland Park? Did you actually have a, have people to select from, or is this just the usual, the same people over and over? That is, seems to be the case, from what I understand.
Our Administrator?
We had an internal review committee. We had our Borough Clerk, our Director of Code Enforcement, as well as our Consulting Planner, Chris Kosenza, and myself, and we, we went through all the applications according to the criteria as outlined before. And then I went through it again myself, prior to making a recommendation to the governing body. Usually it's louder than that. Yes, so it was myself, the Borough Clerk, Jennifer Santiago, Scott Brescher, our Director of Code Enforcement, and our Consulting Planner, Chris Kosenza of LRK, who met with me to go through all the applications that led into our recommendation to the governing body.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Kaplan, 323 Harrison Avenue in Highland Park. I will just add a personal experience about the problem with the sewer system in town. After Hurricane Ida, or Tropical Storm Ida, we had three feet of sewage in our basement. It took a year to take care of cleaning it up and putting in infrastructure so that that doesn't happen again. It took thousands of dollars. We lost a lot of our property out of that basement. It wasn't the first time that it happened. We had had 17 inches of sewage some 15 years earlier, which is why we put $5,000 worth of infrastructure in the basement, so that we don't have that again, given that storms are happening more frequently and more severely. It was a huge traumatic loss, to have three feet of sewage come into our basement within a matter of minutes.
The jet vac is supposed to be used. Jill Medinitz, 242 South Sixth. I saw a paper outside about the sewer system and how we could help basically get rid of all that debris. Is there anything we can give a Boy Scout projects for their Eagle projects to help keep, go to the different sewer systems, give them gloves, give them masks, bags, and have them clean up in front of the sewers to clear up all the leaves and all the trash? I mean, it's got to be cleaned up. I mean, Department of Public Works, I heard, is supposed to do this, but they've got other things to do.
Madam Mayor, I can address that if you will.
Please.
And with apologies to Council President.
That has been in your bucket for a while, so yes, you can address it.
It has been, so I'll be addressing more police fire, first aid, and emergency matters. But Sustainable Highland Park brought in a program called Adopt a Drain, where you volunteer to literally adopt a drain. I, many, many years ago, even before the program, adopted the one at the corner of Johnson and South Second where I live. The program involves cleaning out the water bottles that flow there, the garbage that flows there, the leaves that create dams so the water doesn't run in. The volunteers don't go down into the drains because it's dangerous.
No, no, I mean on the top. The leaves are on top.
But that's what they do, on top, and they actually report that in so that we can, can keep track of that. And right now, I think around 20% of the drains are adopted by the program. And if you go online on the Borough website and you look for the GIS map of the sewer system, it actually, I think about 98%, by cooperating with the county and their GIS system, we've managed to map out almost all of the outlets in town to do that, to keep track of them. So that Adopt a Drain program is going on. That has freed up the DPW to actually get it, to get down in the storm sewers, to clean out the trash that, that does accumulate there, because they have to lift, you know, either get, get the suction machine down in there, or if they can't, to pull the grate up.
It's just not enough, because I walk around with this money and I see...
Every time the wind blows, or every, and more, more often, every time the rain washes stuff down the street, we're going, we're going to get that. So that it's an ongoing mission. It is probably an unforgiving one. We maybe break even with it, but, but that's what we're doing.
Let's tell property owners to, they need to leave the property and put in a bath and clean that up.
Some of us do, but some of it, I have a corner property that seems I end up with everybody's recycling during a windstorm. And, and unfortunately, I've tried to, to train the wind to take it across the Lafayette Apartments, but it just doesn't work. I usually get there, so, just to make light of it, we all, we all have the problem. We all understand it. And the Adopt a Drain program is of volunteers and our neighbors and us taking care of the problem.
Hi, Alyssa Kaplan, again, 323 Harrison Avenue. So glad to hear that you're going to be including the Fire Department in dealing with the problems around sewage. Do let me recommend hip waders on, on the trucks, because when the Fire Department arrived to help us out, because our utilities were at risk, they had no hip waders, and looked at how deep it was and said, "We can't do anything here." So hip waders would be a useful thing.
I know when I went down into some of the, the sewers, the old-fashioned brick ones, I was standing there in street shoes. I, I understand.
Thank you.
Lois Leving, speaking of sewers, let's go back even further. 1988, 89, three sewer floods we had, other people had. The town, the Borough had lots here and there. And the jet vac runner, the worker, was three doors down. He lost two entire kitchen bas, basement kitchens. The upstairs one was okay, single-family house. He jet backed, which is like rotor rudering, constantly, the sanitary suit system I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the storm drain that goes out to the river where the leaves accumulate. Now, you slowed that down. I never saw the jet vac for decades, until now Middlesex Water has come out and was, has cleaned a few times. But he was doing it religiously almost every other month. Now that takes men, that takes manpower. We've got a mattress on Denison Street that's been out there for a month, and it'll be out there till April, because you don't have the manpower to pick up. I'm going to make a welcome to Highland Park for all these people. You're not going to get bulk trash picked up, except April, May, whatever it is, not June and July, August, maybe it is June, and not again till September. You can't do this, keep doing this, cutting back to people, and, and then you spend, and you don't get a lot of money for the properties that you are probably going to sell. It, it'll be a very interesting welcome, welcome mat, welcome to Highland Park, welcome wagon used to exist. And tell them all the problems here, tripping on, on the pavement, tripping on the sidewalks that belong to the Borough, not to the homeowners, the perimeter sidewalks, we won't go into that, but we know that's true. I mean, okay, we're going to see a mattress there forever. This is what you're doing, we're cutting back, and I think DPW needs more help and more workers to do some of the leaves, and they do a lot, and it, it's the leaves and the recycling that ends up in the gutters, but I'm talking about the sanitary. She's talking about the sanitary system. That's different. You need to rotor ruderate, for whatever reason, more often.
Thank you, Lois, we'll look into that. Borough Administrator, can you look into that? And I'm quite sure Councilmember Hirsch will look into getting that removal on Denison.
Good evening, Robert Leavage, 123 Magnolia Street. I see that after this public comment session, you have a working session regarding the vacant property ordinance. And I was kind of disappointed that, I saw that that was on the agenda for this evening, but there's no indication of what you're considering changing to or amending that ordinance, and what that might look like. You know, I'll be sticking around to find out what that is, but without knowing what you're looking at, it's hard to talk about it. But what I would like to see is that you do enforce it in some way and make it stronger so that we can do something about all the vacant properties that we have on Main Street right now, and that is enforceable. Reading over what's on the books right now, it really doesn't seem like you've used it over the last couple of years, and that there's really not a, a good way of enforcing it, because all it really needs to be done is say, "Hey, I'm marketing my business to, out there, I have it up for rent," and then they could sidestep the ordinance. Have you ever enforced that ordinance over the last?
It's on the books, we're going to be discussing it further to see how we can boost our, we're going to be discussing it later on, to look at how we can make improvements.
Thank you.
Just want to add one other item regarding the five pot shops that you plan to issue letters for this evening. Just so the public understands how this is not a particularly cost-effective approach for Highland Park. Let's say these five, they happen to come in, they come up with a million dollars of revenue. Highland Park's 2% would be all of $20,000, which, as our chief knows, is not even enough to hire another police officer to handle all of those extra five, and all the petty crime and nuisances and loitering that would occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Seeing that there's no further questions, we move to... We move to either a five-minute recess, or councilmembers, would you want a good five-minute recess, or we just move into work session?
Work session.
Work session.
Okay. Now we're going to move into our work session portion of the meeting. Work session, no formal action will be taken at this time. Do you want to move down here or go sit up?
Let's stay up here. I don't want to sit up here.
Okay.
Are we staying here?
Thank you all for coming. Awesome. Hey. I know, I had reached out to Terry to talk about the vacant property ordinance, because this is something that came up on one of, one of the meetings I attended. And we wanted us to take a, a second look at this, because we have a lot of properties that have been sitting for years, and it's in total blight of our town. And I think that we need to look and see how we can try to address some of the vacant properties that are out there that just sits, and there's no movement on it, and we don't know what we can do anything about it. So that's why I brought it, put it on the agenda.
No, I think it's a great idea, Mayor. The state recently amended the, the vacant properties ordinances mainly with regard to foreclosures, and, and our, our new councilman is familiar with that as well. But that, that addresses foreclosures, and then, so many towns have gone ahead and revised their, their regular vacancy that we have to line up with the new state law so that they match, so that there's no challenges. One of the things they did was they reduced the amount that we could charge. Our Section 303 says if it's vacant for, for three years, it's 5,000. They did adjust those numbers downward based upon some litigation.
Downwards?
Not a lot, but they have adjusted it downward based upon, there was some litigation in South Jersey that the vacant property ordinance in Atlantic County was thrown out. But a lot of towns are revamping all of theirs to match this new state law, and it's very much more streamlined now.
What's that, that number? Do you know? Or you could just send it to me later.
I can email you that information and, and some of the samples that I've gathered. But this would cover, the new laws, if you use the new laws, the pattern that the Borough Attorney can do is that it covers vacant residential, which is in foreclosure, and the state says you have to pass an ordinance, basically the one they wrote, which is actually good. And then use that as a pattern for vacant residential non-foreclosure, what we call it, the abandoned houses. We've got a few of those. Last, last round, we had an inventory of 10. And then also commercial. We can address commercial with it. And I don't think we addressed commercial at all.
Our Attorney, do you have anything to add as it pertains to the vacant property, as it, vacant properties and foreclosures and for lack of words?
Well, I, I agree with Councilman George, there, there was a revision to the state law, I think that should be incorporated. We have Chapter 303 right now, we could simply add commercial to that. In fact, we started to draft that when you had this initial conversation about this some time ago. So with, with that direction, if you like, we'll go ahead and amend to Chapter 303.
Yes, I would, yes.
Can I?
Yes.
Do you?
No, no, go ahead.
So, so when we're talking about amending this particular ordinance, that it was a change in state law that allows us to apply this to commercial properties, to apply an existing ordinance to commercial properties. So, did, were there also changes that allow the, the procedures by which we can move forward with fines, or move forward with some sort of incentive for, for them to, to rent their places? So is it...
So is it, the, the, what I'm wondering is, is do our existing ordinance, there's a lot of hoops that need to happen before there can be, um, uh, incentives or pushes to get someone to, to rent something. Is there a change in state law that allows us to streamline that process so that there can be a quicker resolution to abandoned properties rather than waiting for a, a foreclosure and, and, and then a number of different sort of other hoops, like they, the amount of time that it's been out there, the number of times that they've been trying to lease it and all that? Can we, can we make that faster? Well, and we could take a look at that. The main, as, as Councilman George indicated, the main focus was to address the issue of foreclosed properties. That was, that was the main thrust, as I recollect, the state changed. Uh, we could see that it's a little bit sensitive about due process. In other words, you have to go through various steps to give the opportunity to the property owner, commercial or residential, to address the problem. So you can't hit them with a summons one day and then take them to court the second day. There has to be a period of time where you give them a reasonable period of time to respond to that. But we could take a look to see if there's a way to tighten up what we currently have because we have process, but you're right, it takes a while in terms of how the enforcement reward, and I don't believe that has been accelerated in the new law. Is there, um, provisions within the new law or provisions with our, in our ordinance that would allow for differentiation of commercial properties based on square feet of frontage? So the bigger properties, the one that could cause a bigger issue, would face higher fines or hits? Is there anything in the existing ordinance or anything in the change of law that would allow us to do something like that? Well, as we say right now, the, the current ordinance would have to be amended to pull commercial in start with because the beginning of this ordinance talks about residential properties, so we would have to expand that. I don't believe you could treat a big property differently than a little property. If it's abandoned, it qualifies for, uh, falling under the statute, then I think we would treat them all the same way.
So, um, Councilmember, Councilmember George mentioned that the, the cost, it went from a five thousand fee to a downgraded fee, and he also spoke about that there's a, there has to be abandoned for three years or more, or vacant for three years or more. Am I correct, vacant or abandoned?
Uh, what, what it says is that, um, there's, it, it, for the foreclosure section, um, it has to be registered within so many days of the filing of foreclosure. Uh, for the vacant and abandoned, which is non-foreclosure, um, they're, they're using the same guideline, um, that five hundred dollar registration, um, and then it's a, it's a thousand dollars the first year and two thousand for the second and for, and, and forever until something happens with the building. Uh, what they did was they eliminated the five thousand dollars, which was the, the popular version some ten years ago when, uh, everybody was drafting and, and our model came up. Um, they, they reduced that to two thousand, but you don't wait three years for it.
Does the clock already started? What my question basically is, has the clock already ticked because it's been over five years that this property has been laid there vacant?
If there's, if there's a particular property that's been vacant for five years, if the...
Or on.
If the process started with the notice, then they should be, they could be assessed, um, a fee. Now, the problem is that those fees were reduced in part by litigation and in part by the state law. So, um, we do, we do have to adopt the new ordinance on foreclosures, um, and as, as council said, use it as a law for vacant and abandoned as well, uh, because we have to adopt, we have to adopt the new ordinance for the foreclosures, that's part of the law we have to do.
We, we have the old fee schedule that, rather than council was talking about, so we would have to adjust that in addition to bringing in the commercial. If we had had, if, if code enforcement had given a notice to one of these properties that we want to enroll, I agree with Councilman George, we could start the clock running from that notice, but we'd have to see how many and who got notices.
Excuse me. Uh, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify a point. I think we discussed this, Borough Attorney. Um, I think our current ordinance does include commercial, but it's kind of vague how we would approach it. I, I believe that we were surprised to find that in there because it was all of our common understanding that it didn't, and, um, but that said, I think that doesn't really change. I just wanted to put that out there just in case somebody's read it, and as I did before the meeting, and I thought there was reference to commercial properties. That said, I think we do have a lot of procedural improvements we could try to make based on, on what, what the best practices may be now that this has been out there for longer. Um, so I just wanted to make sure, and I, I do wanna look at, maybe there's something we can do. One of the, the approach I was planning on taking, depending on where council wanted us to go, was what could we do with the existing ordinance and what recommendations to our current ordinance might be helpful based on some of the input we've gotten from Main Street, from other stakeholders, to try to address the problem, properties that we're all concerned about. The other thing is, our program has focused and was initially focused very much on residential properties, especially when the foreclosure crisis was at its real peak, and we were having some real problems in some of the neighborhoods, there were real, uh, detriments to those areas. So I think it's been somewhat effective, and we still maintain and, and, and work through that, the residential component, acknowledging we need to update based on the new state statutes.
Yes, we, we definitely...
I just wanted to put that out there and Ed, I'm sorry if I got that wrong, but I thought we had uncovered that our current ordinance does have a kind of mention of commercial properties, but I'm not clear on how the implementation of our...
So I think we need to clean up the language and make it much more clear and do a complete update and be inclusive what this state is requiring us to do.
Do we wanna take this to the Economic Development Committee?
So I, 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 I would say sure, but I think we ought to address something.
Yeah, I think the first draft would be...
Yeah, I think, I think the first draft would come from Ed and Terry, and we come to the Economic Development Committee and make a recommendation on that. So we'll get a draft if you figure to take it.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, um, we're done?
Before you adjourn, I have something to say. I don't hear anybody saying, "Let's bring some new business in from New Brunswick, which is overcrowded, or Edison, or New York, where it's very expensive rentals and encourage them to move in."
Sorry. Let's talk after the meeting, this is not the public comment.
Yes. All right, there is no executive session, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all for coming.